Okay. Ready to call the Planning Commission for June 3rd of the Town of Gilbert? Could I get a roll call?
Chairman Joshua Ailer.
Here.
Vice Chairman Christopher Sippel.
Present.
Commissioner David Blazer.
Here.
Commissioner Carl Bloomfield.
Here.
Commissioner David Kevney.
Here.
Commissioner Brent Muddy.
Here.
Commissioner Jennifer Whitman.
Here.
I have approval of the agenda.
Your Honor.
Yes. Yes.
I move to approve the agenda with the following changes. To move item nine, GP 15-01 Copper Landing, which is a continuance, to 7115. Move item 10, which is Z 15-01 Copper Landing, which is a continuance as well. Items 11, UP 15-07, to include the staff report addendum that was given to us this evening, as well as Z 15-08, to also include the, yes, move those items to the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
I got, yeah, I read them all.
You read the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I have a motion from Vice Chair Sippel and a second from Commissioner Whitman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 7-0. Okay, that brings us to communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters not on the agenda. The commission's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Is there anybody here that'd like to speak under these circumstances? Seeing none, move forward to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, public hearing items will be heard in one public hearing. After the consent public hearing, these items may be approved by a single motion at the request of a member of the commission or staff. An item may be removed from the consent calendar and may be heard, acted upon separately. Other items on the agenda may be added to consent public hearing and approved under a single motion. On our consent agenda, we have items number six, which is S 15-02 Legacy Point at Seville. We have item number seven, which is UP 15-05, the True West Credit Union Use Permit. Items number eight, Z 15-10, the Commons at the Square. And we have a staff amendment that was handed to me, so that would be added to that. We also have the two continued items, GP 15-01 Copper Landing and 10, Z 15-02 Copper Landing zoning case. Then we also have items number 11, UP 15-07 Dorito Spectrum and Z 15-08 Dorito at Spectrum, the zoning case. Do I have a motion? Or, for approval? Oh. Approval of the consent agenda. I need an approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
I guess I'm looking at council. Do we have a motion for, okay, there you go. All right, so I have a motion from Vice Chair Sippel and a second by Commissioner Bloomfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 7-0. That brings us to the non-consent public hearing. The non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support or in opposition to the public hearing items may do so. If you wish to comment on the public hearing items, you must fill out a public comment card indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard upon. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no future public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. So, if you'd like to comment, which we do have a few comment cards already, there's yellow slips on the back and if we can get them to our staff here at the table. So, our first item on non-consent is item 13, GP 15-02 Villages at Val Vista, Amy Thames.
Good afternoon, Chairman Ailer and members of the Planning Commission. We are here to discuss Villages at Val Vista Public Storage. You saw this at study session a month or so ago, and it was discussed for planned area development, and it would be the final phase of a commercial site located at the southwest corner of Val Vista and Germain Roads. You can see here on the aerial, the site that we discussed, it is adjacent to a charter school to the south, and a little notch out of it was approved previously this last spring as Primrose Preschool. And the preschool did actively work with this applicant regarding coordination of site plans and such. So, the existing general plan is for shopping center. Now, I've got general plan with a PAD on there, which is incorrect, but it is shopping center, and it would like to go to general commercial. For zoning, it is a shopping center with a PAD overlay going to general commercial with a PAD overlay. The surrounding zoning is a single-family detached to the west, regional commercial to the north, single-family 15 to the east, and then the remainder of the shopping center, which is now schools, to the south. The development plan, which was shown to you during study session, does depict a mini storage facility with indoor air-conditioned storage and some outdoor roll-up door storage, all fenced and walled as part of their security, and with the main entrance on Val Vista Road with parking. The request for the zoning and the modification with the development plan is, and the underlying reason to rezone from shopping center to general commercial, is the need to have a single user greater than 75,000 square foot. General commercial does not have a maximum limit on a user or building within a shopping, within the commercial center. And then, some other modifications that are requested is the building setback to side to the schools would be reduced from 20 feet to zero feet, and that would be the wall of the mini storage acting as the barrier between the two properties. So, the fences that are existing on the property line of the school and what will be constructed with Primrose Preschool, if the construction doesn't happen at the same time, would be removed, and the walls of the roll-up mini storage buildings, four and five, would become the barrier wall. And then, a perimeter fence wall would be along the entry drive there. The other building setback requirement or reduction would be the rear building setback along Granite. Under the general commercial, it's a 75-foot building setback, and it is, the request is to reduce it to 20 feet. Then, for landscape, the landscape reduction for the side, which once again is to the schools, would go from 20 to zero in order to avoid the no-man's land, which is hard to police, hard to maintain, number of different things, to put a wall adjacent to a wall. And then, the reduction in the landscape setback to the rear, which is Granite, and that would be from 40 to 10 feet. We will note, and I don't seem to have a pointer up here, we will note that there is a 14-foot landscape tract that runs along Granite, and so that 10 feet would be in conjunction to that landscape tract. The landscape tract is maintained and owned by the HOA, and so the additional 10-foot landscape would be maintained by the mini storage facility. This is just a cutout overlay to show you the relationships between the storage facility and the homes in the area. I will note that the applicant did do an enhanced entry development at the corner of Val Vista and Germain, and worked with staff to create accent walls and hardscape and seating and landscape that not only reflects Villages at Val Vista, but also offers some interest at that corner, and makes it feel like more part of the overall community of that southwest corner, giving sort of an entry feature. This is a summary of the modifications that are requested that I just went over. And then, the applicant did provide the PAD justifications for the modifications that Planning Commission did request at study session, and so they are listed in your staff report and up here on the screen, they are summarized. The applicant, as I mentioned at study session, did walk through the neighborhood and talk to the different, to the various homeowners in the area, and also to the schools, to explain their project, to explain the modifications, and to discuss the overall development. I did include in your addendum packet today, a letter from the Charter School stating their support, and in your staff report packet, there was a letter from Primrose Preschool stating their support. In the packet, I did provide you today also, there were two letters from, or two emails from neighbors stating their concern over the project, and some of the concern had to do with the setbacks and the reduction in the setbacks. This is a graphic showing the distances from the proposed mini storage walls and building to the side-on residential across the street. So, there, not only is there not, there's landscape tracks, but there's also the ride away involved, and so you can see that it is well over 75-foot away from the nearest resident across Granite. And you can see how the massing is shown here also. And the buildings, this is a cross-section that is taken actually right through where the manager's quarters would be, so it's toward the north end of the project. Zero setbacks, as we kind of discussed here, that it's a coordinated design with the preschool. Primrose wrote a letter of support. I did not have a chance to update this, but as I stated, the Charter School added a letter of support, and the zero setbacks to the south would avoid the creation of the no-man's zone we discussed. One of the questions at study session had to do with safety of mini storage. I did contact the Gilbert Police Department, and they sent me a spreadsheet of reports that had anything to do with mini storages. And I went through and I weeded out anything that just happened to happen just in front of a mini storage project. So, if it happened on the street, if they happened to pull into the mini storage parking lot because there was an accident on the street, I did not report those. What I did is I provided you the ones that had to do specifically with the mini storage, either their clients, happened on the property, or to the property. So, you have a report of stolen checks, retort of contents missing from a storage unit, person seen with bolt cutters acting suspicious, dumping and suspect behavior. There was one trespassing, and there was one domestic violence of the clients at the mini storage having a dispute. So, in 10 years, there were six reports that occurred, so .6 per year, which none of them had to do with hazardous materials, firearms and ammunition, and some of the concerns that were raised by the neighbors. So, I just wanted to make sure that you're aware, we did look into that, and this is what the police department provided. The elevations were updated. The project did go to design review this last month for comment, and so the applicant did make some revisions based on that. One of the things that design review did ask for was to see an overall elevation of the northern elevation of the project that would be along Germain, which is the elevation on the bottom here. And, so, this is not design review, but it was something that did come up at the last hearing, so I wanted to make sure to respond to that. And then, just a close-up of what it would look like from the east looking in toward where the opaque gates are. So, not only would the project be surrounded by either eight-foot wall or walls that are buildings, but they would also be, have opaque gates so that really you're not seeing into the facility. I will note that the applicant is willing to stipulate that they will do one story with this, though two stories is allowed within the zoning category. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know the applicant is here with the presentation and is ready to speak.
Thank you, Amy. Do we have any questions for staff at this point? No. Commissioner Blazer?
I was reading, I was reading the agenda when you were speaking, so I apologize if you already said this, but you mentioned that, back on the elevation, that you mentioned that something would be opaque. Did I hear that correctly?
Correct. If you see here at the top graphic, on the left-hand side of the taller massing, there is an opaque gate. So, where you key punch in to get into the facility, the gate there and the emergency gate to Granite, which is being stipulated as part of the design development plan, the emergency gate is also opaque, as are the man gates.
Okay. And, what about the glass? Is the glass going to be opaque?
At this point in time, the applicant has indicated they prefer to have glass that you can see through. They would like to do doors behind the glass, which is their standard. There has been discussion whether the doors should be beige or orange. They typically like to do orange. Design review did have a little bit of a discussion about that. I'm not sure any resolution came to it, though I do know the applicant does prefer the orange doors.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions for staff at this point in time? Great, thank you. Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here.
Right.
Pardon the delay. You can take that off my time, Mr. Chairman. For your record, the name is Gilbert, 701 North 44th Street. I'm here this evening on behalf of Public Storage and the current owner of the property, Gary Davidson, who has owned the property for more than 10 years, and has been very frustrated at the lack of opportunities to develop this property. But we've done what we can, and the fact that we have two schools located there is a testimony to the tenacity and flexibility of the property owner. Amy has done a good job of explaining the posture we're in. We're basically asking for a minor amendment to the general plan and a rezoning to general commercial. This is basically a six-acre project. You should know that we have worked very tenaciously with the staff and with the neighborhood for almost a nine-month period. There have been a rich plethora of changes to this application from the application that we first started with. Now, this case reminds me a little bit of Henry Ford's famous statement, that you can have a Ford in any color you want as long as it's black. Every mini storage developer I've represented loves orange. But we have, and I hope you'll be patient with me, but we've made a lot of changes and reduced the amount of orange on this to a very de minimis number in response, both, frankly, to the staff and to the Planning Commission. It's a major change for public storage, and I'll discuss that in a moment. We're only here for one reason, and you may hear this repeated almost ad nauseam this evening, but we're allowed mini storage under the existing zoning. The problem is that the existing zoning, the SE zoning category, doesn't allow any building to be over 75,000 square feet. Well, our major building that is located to the north is about 79,000 square feet. But under your ordinance, it isn't just building, they combine uses. So, the other buildings that are south are also combined into the use, so it's 102,000. But really, what the ordinance is intended to focus on is that no building be larger than 75,000 square feet. Well, we can't make that, and so we're asking for a zoning change. That's the only reason. Other than that, this mini storage use would be allowed under the existing zoning. I cannot emphasize enough that we could build a 75,000-square-foot, two-story mini storage on this building, or on this facility, as it's currently constituted, without any change. And again, the fact that we only have 79,000 square feet in our main building indicates we are not far off from what even would be allowed under the existing zoning. Now, in our study session with you, there was concern over the setback along the east side. So, I'd like to start with that, which is not the way I usually start in a presentation, but I think there are certain basic givens that I'm not going to spend a long time developing. Just quickly, the fact that there is a huge amount of commercially-zoned land in the area, and that by developing this as a mini storage, we are not taking away from the opportunity for the Town of Gilbert to have a lot of, as much retail commercial as they can possibly field. Secondly, mini storage is a very good neighbor to residential. It's quiet, it has a modicum of traffic, and it has regulation on hours, a point I will talk about in a moment. It's generally perceived, and I've done a lot of mini storage cases in my career, that we are a good neighbor, and that's evidenced by the fact that we have been in the neighborhood, we have generally neighborhood support, and we have letters coming to you from both of the schools to the south indicating that they are in support. And although we do not have a letter, we met with the HOA Association. They are in an interesting posture. The jurisdiction was just turned over to them in May, and they've only had one meeting. We had a meeting with them, and they indicated that we could say this evening that they are not in opposition, although we still have a few matters to work out with them. So, having said that, let me jump to the justification for the setback on the west side, okay? The west side requires a 75-foot setback. I point out to you that normally, the situation where you have commercial that butts right up to residential is the focus and rationale for requiring that 75-foot setback. There is no contemplation in the ordinance for the fact that a 50-foot street, in this case, separates us from the nearest residential. So, even before we start, we have a 50-foot separation just with the roadway alone. But if you measure from wall to wall, and that's not building to building, but from wall to wall, you have an 84-foot separation from our wall to the wall adjacent to the residential. Furthermore, the existing homes that are on Granite, which is the street that separates us from the residential, they side onto Granite Street and are, interestingly enough, two stories. In addition to that 84-foot setback and separation, the existing landscape has two landscape easements. It's very interesting. The Homeowners Association actually owns 14 feet of open space on the mini storage side of the road. So, the responsibility then for that landscape easement is with the HOA, but we are working on an agreement where we'll jointly maintain it or turn over the maintenance to them and reimburse them. But the point I'm making is justifying the 75-foot deviation under the PAD is that in addition to the 84 feet then, you've got 14 feet of landscaping on the mini storage side, and you have 10 feet of landscaping on the west side of Granite Street. So, there also, under the existing zoning on the property, and as the staff report points out to you, and makes a good point here, that we want to underscore, is that we're allowed to have access on Granite Street. When we met with the neighbors, this was a major concern to them. They wanted no access onto Granite Street, and we have agreed to accommodate them. Now, we have to put in emergency access, but basically, for all practical purposes then, there is no access onto Granite Street. Again, underscoring and justifying the 75-foot variance that we're asking for. The, if the property were not being developed in a single phase, and let's say the property were developed maybe if, for example, we were to just put the mini storage in, a two-story mini storage at 75,000 square feet on the west side, we would divide the parcel into two parcels, leaving the east side available for fast food or whatever would go there. If that were to happen, then our front yard would be on Germain, and we would only be required to have a 20-foot setback. So, the ordinance doesn't take into account, when it requires the 75-foot setback, the fact that in this case, there's a 50-foot roadway and over almost 100 feet of separation between our building and the nearest home. Furthermore, there's a hardship here because you all know that you measure, or that you determine a front yard by the narrowest portion of the lot. Unfortunately for us, the narrowest portion of the lot is on Val Vista, because the lot is a long, narrow lot, which makes the west end our backyard. And that there again, you have, because of the way the ordinance is interpreted, a hardship underscoring again our justification for the setback. Couple of other points we want to make, and that is, the main access to the property will be from Val Vista Drive via two driveways, as you see on the site plan, and we're providing plenty of parking. Let me also emphasize again that the mini storage facility is considered a good neighbor, a low-traffic, low-lighting, and quiet use, and that there is a need for mini storage in the immediate area. We serve primarily residential neighborhoods, and will be a nice buffer transition from the residential and the, from Val Vista and Germain. Now, a bit about our reach out to the neighborhood. Our neighbor to the south, where we're also asking for a setback variance, are two schools. You have letters from both of those schools indicating their support. We're also asking for a variance there, but we're adjacent to a ball field in both cases, so there's already open space. And the schools, we've worked with them and coordinated our project with the schools, which has in turn generated their support. Again, we've met with the newly-formed HOA on May 20th, and they did not express any significant opposition. We've also walked the adjacent subdivision. I see that there are some neighbors here. Some may be in opposition, but as we walk the But as we walked the neighborhood, the overwhelming majority that we talked to, and we reached 18 out of the 33 people that are immediately in the subdivision to the west, and they indicated that they had no concern or objection to the property. Now, we've also made several concessions that came about as a result of our meeting with the neighbors that we wish to quickly share with you. First of all, we've agreed, as I indicated earlier, at the neighbors' request, that we'll have no access on the western street, Granite Street. Access will be limited to Val Vista. We also were asked to stipulate to one story, which we've done. So all of our buildings are one-story. There are some tower elements, but they're simply to break up the massing of the building. They're not occupied space. And the current shopping center zoning on the property allows for 35 feet and two stories. We've agreed to low-level wall-pack lighting, contrary to what would be there if a regional shopping center were to go on this location. There's no open field of parking. We're providing a secured gated facility with video surveillance. We have limited our hours from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The majority of the square footage and all of the large building on the site, underscoring the quality of this project, will be air-conditioned and climate-controlled. And lastly, we are providing an eight-foot wall along our border with the residential The staff also asked if we could do something to enhance the corner feature at the media corner of Val Vista and Germaine. We have accommodated that, and we provide an enhanced corner feature, as you can see from the exhibit. We're providing a great deal of landscaping. Those little L-shaped things are... Ballard's. I can't think, I've lost, lost, and a lot of pressure up here.
Gabians.
Gabians, sorry. Our Gabians, which is a nice feature. There's an area where you can sit down there along Val Vista. There's also a trail allowing people to walk through there and come around and visit our site. So I think we've done a nice job of providing a nice entry feature there at the immediate corner. We're also providing a decorative building design along primrose and adjacent to primrose and the Ball Charter School. We're providing adjacent design colors and canopies, block wall details, and so on, underscoring the quality of this project. Now, let me end, and I know you'll be happy to hear those words, by saying that while every miniStorage developer I know loves orange, and if you reflect on it, almost every miniStorage you'll see is primarily an orange building, despite who builds it. And public storage has a lot of public storage buildings in the town of Gilbert that are primarily featuring the color orange. At the request of the design review and your staff, we have drastically reduced the amount of orange. So you don't see the orange stripe all the way across. We have limited orange on our signage. Now, let me talk about the east elevation along Val Vista, where there are glass doors. All right? Here, again, we are agreeing to reduce the amount of orange. So let me go through what you'll see through those glass doors. There at the immediate corner, that's our entryway. You won't see any roll-up doors of any color behind that, because that's the office. The next segment is the only orange you will see along Val Vista, other than the sign up on top. So the rest of the site, the roll-up doors will be beige, and we will stipulate to that. So there's very limited amount of orange on this frontage along Val Vista. We are here with a quality project. We worked very diligently to bring a project that is compatible with the standards of Gilbert, and we're here with strong support. And the staff, as you are well aware, is recommending approval of this project. I'll be glad to answer any questions and wrap up my presentation. Thank you for your patience for my usually loquacious comments.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Do we have any questions for the applicant at this time? Commissioner Mudi?
Understanding you're saying you're going to stipulate to a one-story building, if I look at staff's report, when we go from the SC to the GC zoning, the maximum building height goes from 35 to 45, and I don't see where the one-story is stipulated. So I'm curious, one, where might I find that stipulation? Then, two, if it is just one-story, what is the proposed building height that we're talking about? Because it looks like the limitations have actually increased.
All right. We will, I agree that it is not a staff stipulation, but we have agreed on the record to one-story. That's what we've promised the neighbors, and that's the site plan that you see. So we would enthusiastically embrace your placing the stipulation of one-story. Now, let me give you the exact height. Need to check my notes here. You understand there are some towers in certain places to break up the wall. Those towers are 29 feet, but they're very limited. The balance of it is, what, 15? The balance is very close to 15, give or take an inch or two. And we would stipulate to that.
Thank you.
Have any other questions for the applicant at the time? Commissioner Blaser?
Thank you. You mentioned, if you could go to the other elevation, you mentioned that you'd be willing to stipulate beige doors beyond a certain point along Val Vista.
I said that.
But you didn't speak to Germaine or the north elevation. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, there are no doors on the Germaine elevation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for applicant at the time?
I have one more.
Oh, Commissioner Blaser.
Paul, I know you said it, but I might have phased out because of your loquacious.
Sorry.
Whatever. No, I'm just teasing you.
These are long.
You said it first. I just was saying it again, sorry.
I deserve it.
No. You mentioned something about how much was going to be air-conditioned. I think you said that all of the buildings were going to be air-conditioned. Is that correct?
No. Only the large building is air-conditioned.
That makes sense, okay.
The smaller ones are not.
I'm glad I clarified that, then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
That'll bring us to the public. I'm going to read through, well, I guess we have some, but let's just start with Jason Olive, opposed, which is to speak. Is Jason here? Can you come up and state your name and town of residence?
Hi, I'm Jason Olive. I live in Gilbert. I live south of here, south of this project. I marked that as being opposed, but since I heard you guys do your presentation, I've changed my opinion. I think I'm in favor of this now, as long as the... My main concern was setbacks along Germaine Road and along Val Vista and screening and mechanical equipment. I just wanted to make sure that got taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean Mattern?
My name is Dean Mattern, and I live on Germaine and Granite, on the corner. So my house will be affected probably more than anyone. And my biggest concern is the setback, that they're trying to get the exception for the setback, which would bring their building literally about 90 feet from my fence. So that's my biggest concern. And the landscaping setback that they're also trying to get, again, brings it closer to my yard, and that's my biggest concern. I want you to know I'm opposed to the setback requirements that they're trying to get exceptions for.
Could you, we have the graphic point where your house is in that picture, Ms. Stamm.
How do I do this?
No, you just point at the screen.
Oh, okay.
It's a laser pointer.
Oh, it's a laser, okay.
There we go.
I think we're on.
I think you got to hold the button.
Oh, you got to hold it, okay.
There we go.
Where are we at?
Yeah.
I'm right here, right on the corner.
No.
This is Granite?
Yes.
And this is Germaine?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm right here.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Gets a little turned around there sometimes, it's all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also have Suzanne Mattern, she's opposed but does not wish to speak. Is that correct? Or would you like to speak?
Question?
Yeah, come on up.
Actually, my husband's same house.
Okay.
He said that the HOA manages how much? What was the yardage?
14 feet.
14 feet. And then they're also going to keep how much farther between that and the wall?
10 feet.
10 more feet. So it's going to be 24 feet from the sidewalk.
Oh, from the road, the edge of the road.
From the road.
Oh, okay.
20-foot landscape setback, they only have 14 ownership.
Oh, okay.
And then there's 10 more behind that, so it's 30.
Is that part of the right-of-way?
Right. Can you go back to the one that just has the easement? That one. That wall right there is literally my house. So that will be where my daughter parks. This wall right there, where it has the sidewalk and then it has the HOA-covered area of, what, 13 feet, 15 feet, 14 feet? Is that wall where they're saying it is now, and they want to move it forward?
I don't know where the wall is located today.
So this is the sidewalk, then? This is the HOA? This is the extra that they're going to maintain?
Right.
And this is where the wall is?
Correct.
And this is where the setback is going to be? And this is 8 feet, but this is going to be 15?
Right.
And then 29?
Okay. Yeah.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Our biggest concern is that, one, that's going to be emergency exit, and how often are we going to have an emergency that people are going to be exiting there? I'm not sure what makes it an emergency exit, or if it's just fire or something that's there. And then how much traffic are we going to have? Whether the security cameras are going to be, they said they're going to put security cameras on. Are we going to have security cameras that are going to cover that back part of the lot? Are they going to have guards? Are they going to have anybody out there to maintain to make sure that it's going to be a safe area? Just questions, but I am opposed.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Lisa Rosner, does not wish to speak but is opposed. Ryan Eberle is opposed to the item.
My name is Ryan Eberle. This is the first-ever public hearing that I've attended, so you can, just so you know that I'm passionate about this project, and I am opposed to this. I understand that they are able to build a miniStorage under the current zoning, and that's fine. But I'll call attention to the fact that this property has been rezoned probably six or seven times. I want to remind the Commission that your purpose, I think, is to serve the town of Gilbert residents, not businesses. That may include, you know, obviously, we need business in the town. Nobody's going to argue that. What I am opposed to on this project is the setbacks. This is an old farming town. I think that bringing buildings close to streets, any streets, in a residential area is appalling when you have a light, industrial-zoned property all along Loop 202 on the north side of Germaine. I think this is a, I know the owner has been looking to develop this property for some time, and has had a hard time doing so under the existing zoning. And I think that's why we're all here today, is because he's trying to get some income from this property. But he did purchase this property even probably before it was zoned, as it is now. So knowing full well what it was zoned for. So again, I am opposed mainly on the setbacks. I say if they want to build a miniStorage, let them build it with the existing zoning and the existing setbacks. I don't think anybody can take advantage of street space for setback. That is not the definition of a setback. So if they really want to build the miniStorage there, let them do so with the existing zoning.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Robert Rosner, which is to speak on the item.
Hi, I'm Robert Rosner. I live in the neighborhood Spectrum Estates, which is just outside that property. And we've been over the zoning on this area before, and we actually spoke the first time they wanted to rezone the same area that he's owned. And to put, like the last speaker was saying, these setbacks, and he keeps drawing that, we could build a two-story building. He threatened that to us when he first moved and spoke to us. The whole group that was there said the exact same thing. Why are you building this here when there is miniStorage a mile down the road and two miles up Val Vista? So you're talking about building another commercial, excuse me, general commercial right there as opposed to shopping and restaurants, which we were told were going to be built there. We've been in that property for over, just over 10 years. So we knew the original owners, when they first set this property up, put that neighborhood in and changed the paddy three or four times then. Then we promised that we're going to get some residential, or, excuse me, some retail, and instead, we're looking at industrial. This area, there's, again, just one mile down, there is already a storage facility and a lot of the same type of retail or non-retail, excuse me, general commercial already available. So our concern is why are they moving into our neighborhood? I realize they're having difficulty finding something to put in there, but putting general commercial doesn't need to be there. There's plenty of that already down the street. That's my comment.
Great. Do we have any questions for? Nope, okay, thank you. And that's all the yellow cards we have. Come on up, and if you can fill out a yellow card later and bring it to staff. But could you come up to the microphone and state your name and town of residence?
Yeah, so the name is Roy McLaren. I'm relatively new to the United States. I've been living in Sweden before. I've moved recently to the house in the bottom corner.
Great, thank you.
Basically, I'm appalled that such an industrial-like, large-scale development has been put in the middle of our residential area, and would just like to express my full opposition to the...
All right, thank you.
I'd also point out the fact that this is a single-service type of commercial enterprise, offers one single service. There's a need for a wider spectrum of services that would be of more value to the local neighborhood. But mainly, I'm appalled by the large industrial appearance that will be presented to our immediate neighborhood. People living in the two-story homes along this right-hand row here will be looking directly down into that complex. down into that complex. Okay, those are my comments.
Thank you. Oh, Ms. Thames has a card for you. Okay, is there anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, thank you. Is the, oh, sorry, come on up, if you can also fill out a yellow card when you're done.
Hi, my name is Vijay.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, constructing, I mean, this is just my, you know, I-
Could you speak in the microphone?
Yeah, sure. You know, constructing a commercial, well, commercial property next to school and, you know, next to, you know, and neighborhood, I mean, it's okay, but, I mean, I have seen some mini-storage, I mean, mini-storage spaces, but, and I was seeing, I mean, I mean, maybe there may be some commercial, and if you see the 202, the south side of 202, there is no commercial, like, at least, I mean, the customer commercial space next to residential area. So, I mean, that's one thing, and the thing is, in this community, I mean, even my, I have a kid, I mean, he's just two and a half years old, he always used to play, I mean, one of my colleagues stays in the other apartments, right? Other, the corner house, so they all used to play there. So, the main concern is, the one is, setback is my, one concern, and other than that, if anything, if anything happens, either we just to, next to school, there are many people, right, I mean, there are many kids with this commercial property which is next to school, and maintaining, you know, high, I mean, AC, I'm sure, and I know, AC hot air definitely causes, you know, health issues, that is already there, that's a proven fact, and if you don't maintain, if you don't take some precautions, definitely it will impact. And if you are maintaining that use, constructing that with the number of AC units coming out the air, hot air at the same time, and if any, if any kids playing around it, or any, I mean, definitely, it definitely impacts the health of the, especially to the kids. And that is another concern, I mean, if you, the difference on the setbacks, again, I'm not, I don't know exactly what setbacks has to be followed, but, you know, that's another concern, I just wanted to, you know, bring these points, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, oh, one more, come on up.
Hi, my name is Raga, I live in 1472 East Fleming Way, I think the second one from right. I'm opposed, the reason is I don't like commercial property next to my neighborhood, I believe which will lower my property value, so that is the only reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, come on, please. Just make sure you get a card from Ms. Thames when you come back through.
Hi, my name is Anan, and I live in 1463, so basically, the third house from the second row on that one, so I am also opposed, based on the knowledge that I gained here. I am opposed because it's a commercial property and the setback is getting reduced. So, these are the two reasons.
Anybody else? Okay, oh, one more.
Good evening, my name is Hamad Baghura.
I live in the house.
Great, thank you.
I'm opposed to construction of this public storage facility. I didn't do homework as much as my friends did here, but I did gain more knowledge coming here, but I agree that having an industrial complex close to the, you know, housing community is not a good thing, so I'm just opposed.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so, well, does the applicant have any?
You didn't really think I'd pass up an opportunity.
No, that's why I kind of stopped mid-sentence.
Let me address the comments by the last four speakers or so. They indicate that they don't like commercial, it's already zoned commercial, that's obvious. And then, I'm getting these comments that this is an industrial development, mini-storage is not an industrial development, particularly when we're providing the landscaping, the restrictions on colors, the restrictions on lighting, all the other things that we've committed to do. So, this is clearly not an industrial project. Now, this is a dilemma I often face, and I've not figured out in my years of doing this the best way to handle it, but people say I threaten them when I talk about what could be done under the existing zoning. Well, that may be a threat, but it's also a reality. The fact is, we can put a seventy-five-thousand-square-foot, two-story, mini-storage on the west end of this property with a twenty-foot setback by simply dividing the property and piecing it off. So, we're providing a much better alternative. This isn't a threat, it's just stating the facts of the case, and I try to say it with kindness and charity, but at the same time, that is what could be done under the existing facility, uh, sorry, the existing zoning. We've heard a lot of comments on setbacks, I'm kind of nonplussed on this one. We're providing ninety, ninety feet of setback from a one-story building with an eight-foot wall and landscaping. That's more protection than I submit you will see in but very few cases dealing with commercial in the vicinity of and adjacent to residential. We've also agreed that we will have no traffic on Granite. People have raised objections about the traffic, we are basically removing traffic as an issue. So, this is a terrific protection to this neighborhood, to have no traffic there. The concern was, well, we'll have emergency traffic, you and I know that's going to be very de minimis, there's not going to be, but maybe once every ten years, if that, any emergency traffic that goes on this street. We were also asked the question if there would be guards, we have a couple that will be living on the site twenty-four hours and full security. She asked if we were going to have security cameras, we are, and that's part of what public storage does, that's very routine, and we're happy to stipulate to that. So, the major concerns that we've heard this evening is that somehow we're going to have a deleterious effect on the existing neighborhood. I frankly don't see how that can be argued with verification, because ninety-foot setback, eight-foot walls, one-story building. The next concern that we've had is that this is an industrial building, I think it's clearly indicated that it is not, and then the setback, we're providing a generous setback of ninety feet. I don't know what more we could do, and this project will be much more of an asset to the neighborhood than could be done under the existing zoning. Pardon the repetition, but that's for me unusually and probably welcomely brief, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Okay, well, I guess we have one more person from the public before we bring up staff. Yeah, just come, state your name and-
My name's Tracy Visentiner, and I live on Warbler, which is the second street south of Germaine. I have a question as far as with the towers that they're gonna have, what kind of lighting they're gonna have in those towers? No lighting in the towers? Okay, and the other concern that I have, I was thinking about, I used to work for a lighting company, so I know there's a public storage facility on Val Vista, just south of Warner, across from the Target Shopping Center.
Yes.
And the job that I had, I had to go out at night and look at lighting, and I can tell you that that public storage facility always had their lighting out, the signage was out all the time, the lighting was a little bit poor, so that's a bit of a concern to me, if they're not going to upkeep, you know, the, as a general rule, I don't know if they're franchised or what kind of business that is, but I would like to see something that's going to be upkept if it's gonna be in our neighborhood.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, one, you only get one minute, though.
I won't take that. This is not a franchise, this is going to be developed and owned by public storage, they own their own facilities, and I think they have a well-known record for maintaining the lighting and the upkeep.
Great, thank you. Does staff have anything more to add?
Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission, I will note that there are restrictions in code regarding lighting adjacent to residential uses. The lighting lens cannot be above fourteen feet, no illuminated signage may face residential uses, so, and they must meet point-three candle foot at property line, which will be taken care of during design review and reviewed at that time.
Okay.
In addition, staff is not opposed to the one-story stipulation being added if Planning Commission chooses to do so, and we will take forward to design review the discussion regarding the orange doors and tan doors that was made today. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Okay, well, we'll close the meeting and bring it back to the dials for discussion and possible Ms. Commissioner Bloomfield.
While I personally don't like the use here of a storage unit, I think they've done a good job of working with at least the schools to be able to facilitate, I agree with the setback there being zero, it's a nice use, I mean, they've got a wall there, and it can be utilized in two ways and by both parties, and I like that. I don't know how I feel about it, all, overall, other than I personally would not want to live in that neighborhood and have this come in. That would, that would raise my hackles a little bit, but at the same time, they could go ahead and build it just the same. I'm not sure, as a purview, as a Commissioner, how much I can override that, but I'm just throwing it out there, I don't have any great things to say, other than, yeah, okay.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Coveney.
So, first of all, Mr. Gilbert, I think you presented the project very well, and I also want to acknowledge the residents, I know it's hard to come out and speak at these things, so we definitely appreciate your participation in the public process, it's important to us, and we certainly value your opinion. So, I have a couple of points that were made by the residents that I want to address, and then I want to highlight a few things that Mr. Gilbert presented as the applicant. The first thing was mentioned that it was perceived that our role is to protect the residents. I should point out that it's our job to represent the town in adjudicating land use issues for everyone, and so, we are just as concerned about a commercial owner as we are residential. We often give greater weight to the residents because they're usually in first, but it does not mean that we don't have a great interest in making sure that our businesses succeed as well, so I just want to make sure that's clear. There was a comment that this isn't a good use, but as was mentioned by the applicant, this is an approved use. And one thing that was specifically discussed was the setbacks along Granite. Now, as I studied this case before this meeting, it was apparent to me that if I were the landowner and I really wanted to get this done, and I got denied tonight, I would do, and I wasn't sure the applicant would bring it up, but he did, I would split the lot and actually do the allowable-size building on the smaller lot, which would make my setbacks only twenty feet on the side, so along Granite it'd only be twenty feet. So, you'd have almost the same thing you've got right now, within a few feet of what they've got right now, and you'd have a two-story storage building there. So, I really think that the real win is here tonight for the, for the commercial owner and for the residents are, first of all, you got one story here, that's rare for public storage, especially refrigerated public storage nowadays. You're also getting a neutral color palette as negotiated by the neighbors, substantial landscaping along the perimeter, all three sides, no rear access, other than emergencies, which, by the way, that is driven by the fire department and would be certainly something that would be managed, so I don't think you have to worry about that. You're getting a facility with restricted hours and minimal traffic. So, although, and as Commissioner Bloomfield noted, it may not be the ideal use, it certainly isn't the worst use, and I think there's no way to guarantee what developer's gonna show up on a given day, so we have to, we have to look at what's allowed by land use, by zoning and by general plan, and we have to determine whether or not this is an appropriate fit within those, within those parameters. I think, I honestly think this is a win for the neighbors as far as getting something there that you can count on, it's gonna be well-maintained, I believe, public storage is a good brand name, and I believe that they'll do a good job keeping this property up. I think you're getting some beautiful landscaping, and you're getting a neighbor that will have lights out at ten o'clock, and honestly, not a lot of traffic to bother your neighborhood. So, I really think that the applicant has probably done a good job of negotiating this and actually acquiescing in many areas. And neighbors, I think, despite the opposition, and I can appreciate the opposition, I still think you've probably got a reasonable situation that will, I don't think it'll diminish your property values at all, I don't know, of course, but I don't think this will hurt it, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Blazer.
I have one question, I probably should have asked it earlier. Can I ask a question? How tall will the Gabian walls be at the corner of Val Vista and Germaine?
Three to four feet.
Okay, thank you. I must have missed that, thank you.
I guess I'll go. I don't have any particular issue with mini-storages in general, I think their use is a quiet use, I think their use is a good use, it's a necessary use. It's usually a good use to be located near residential, because it's quiet, because it's typically maintained very well, because it's secure, because of all of, all of those reasons that I think everybody can see with mini-storage. My dilemma here, though, is that I feel that this particular request is far too large for this particular parcel. The size of the building and just the general commercial request in general, I think, is too grand for this small of a parcel. I think that if, I know that the use is a permitted use, if it's developed at seventy-five-thousand square feet as a maximum, combining all the uses together, and I think that if the developer chooses to do that and wants to do that, then they should absolutely do that. But I think I don't, I'm having a really difficult time seeing any justification for changing the general plan and changing the zoning district to allow a larger, a larger mini-storage warehouse-type facility, it's not warehouse, but it's a storage of goods. The, what, I think this, the SC- The, what, I, I think this, the SC standards need to remain intact and in place. I think the general commercial district, even though the, the developer has agreed to limit the building height or the building stories, it still allows up to 45 feet in, in height. I know that he talked about limiting it for the, for the tower elements, but I think overall, the SC is a more appropriate zoning district for this particular location and area. I also have to look long range, too. We've done a lot of zoning cases where we've approved general plan amendments and rezonings for commercial and residential alike, and for whatever reason, economy, things change, funding, and it doesn't get developed. So my concern then is if we were to approve the general commercial zoning district, albeit be specific to a planetary development here, that the next user is going to come in and say, "You already approved GC here. It's already an approved use. We, we just want to erase those development standards and make it either nonspecific or just use the base category." And then I think we somewhat open up Pandora's Box. I, I feel that the neighbors hold a lot of weight. There were some of them that also said, "Hey, if you want to build a mini storage at its allowed size and use, then go for it," but that we're not supportive of the proposed design and increase in size at this location. So for those, for those reasons, I don't think that I can support this application.
Thank you. Vice Chair Sipple.
Yeah, actually, wanted to chat a little bit about the non-air-conditioned building. It's not uncommon for public storage areas to also become pseudo workshops, if you will, and especially in those non-air-conditioned areas. And those are the ones that kind of concern me a little bit more, honestly, than the air-conditioned units, because those are the ones that are closest to the residential. You might find people doing woodworking in there, working on cars in there, and those types of activities that could happen in those other four buildings to the southern part of the property. So I am a little concerned about that because that's where we have most of the setback And so that is one of my initial concerns. I also do agree with Commissioner Whitman in that I, I believe they're asking for too much in this size of an area. Do what you're allowed to do, and do what you're allowed to do. And I think if, if we stick with that in this property in particular, and I know that it'll, there are some things that can change because of that with access and si, height-size and those types of things, but, you know, for, for this piece, do what you're allowed to do, and I would be comfortable with that. We probably wouldn't even be here with the conversation we're having now. But I think it's too much for this size of property, and I also believe that we need to be thinking long range for this on what could happen. I know it's hard to do that, but some things that could happen in those non-air-conditioned units that are the closest to the community surrounding it. So those are my two thoughts on it at this point.
Thank you. And anybody want to chime in next? Commissioner Blazer?
I think Commissioner Cavaney kind of summed up. I echo Commissioner Cavaney's feelings about the applicant doing a good job of responding to concerns. I don't think it's necessarily a bad use for the neighborhood, and I, and I think they've made a lot of concessions. So I, I would be in support.
Commissioner Mudi.
Yeah, I also echo Commissioner Cavaney's sentiments.
Well, I guess that gets him to mind. I don't echo Commissioner Cavaney's comments. I, I do think that the applicant has worked in, in a good direction, but I definitely think that this property could be developed in 75,000 square feet, not 102,000 square feet. I think that 25,000 is what pushes it over the edge for this property. The setbacks landscape-wise, I hear 90 feet. I hear that we could go to 20. Well, then we should have 20. I mean, they're at 10, which is dramatically less when you're doing a landscape. That's another row of trees. A 10, a 10-foot setback to a 20-foot setback, basically you get another row, which would give them more room to soften any noise that might come from it, from anybody who's working in the shop. I'm not sure if that's a use, but I do agree. I've seen it many times. I don't know if that just happens or if it's an actual use. I, I do think for the, the neighbors coming out, a lot, a lot of good insight coming from the neighborhood that directly came through. I mean, I, on the screen, we must have seen like seven or eight houses that are directly affected by this use. I do think that if the property wanted to develop a 75,000 square foot with proper setbacks, I think it would be a good use for the property. I, I think storage near neighborhoods are not as bad, but when you get to a large, large size building, then, then you're, you're in a different stratosphere when it comes to the building use itself. So at that point, I would not be in favor of this. No, well, we'd have seven, so we have to make, so we have seven, so there won't be a tie.
Just real quick, if I can jump in, Your Honor. This is us, I mean, the Planning Commission tonight is just making a recommendation to the city council, and I want to make sure that everyone understands that here this evening, that this is one step in the process. So there's a whole nother body that's going to see this case, discuss this case, and make final recommendations on what can or cannot happen on this piece of property. So I want to make sure that the audience and the, and the community members that are here understand that tonight. Yeah, and, and that they should continue to be a part of this process as it continues to play out.
Your, Your Honor, I'll make a motion if you're open to this.
Yes.
Okay. So I move to recommend to Town Council approval of the Villages at Val Vista Public Storage, a minor general plan amendment, and for the reasons set forth in the staff report, move to recommend approval to the Town Council for Z15-04 Villages at Val Vista Public Storage as requested, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report, including the stipulation for a single story.
Well, would you also, if, if we're making the stipulation for the beige and orange door...
And a stipulation to the colors as discussed by the applicant or as, as mentioned by the applicant.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's two separate motions, correct?
Here it had them combined.
Oh.
That's correct. There, there are two actions being taken tonight, two recommendations, so there'd be two motions.
Should I do them separately, then?
Yes.
Let me redo it. Okay, so I move to recommend to Town Council approval of the Villages at Val Vista Public Storage, a minor general plan amendment.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I, I, we have a motion by Commissioner Cavaney, a second by Commissioner Bloomfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So the passes, I didn't hear your, nay, okay. So passes four to three, and the four, the four votes in favor, Commissioner Mudi, Commissioner Cavaney, Commissioner Bloomfield, and Commissioner Blazer.
And so then I'll follow with the second motion. Move to recommend approval to Town Council for the reasons set forth in the staff report. Move to recommend approval to the Town Council for Z15-04 Villages of Val Vista Public Storage as requested, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report, and the stipulation to single story and the stipulation for neutral colors as described by the applicant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Cavaney, a second by Commissioner Blazer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
So it passes four to three, Commissioner Blazer, Commissioner Bloomfield, Commissioner Cavaney, Commissioner Mudi in favor. Yeah, again, this is just a recommendation to Town Council. Town Council will make the final decision upon this matter, so if you are for or against this matter, please come out to the council meeting. They definitely would like the public's input in, in this matter. Thank you. That brings us to item number 15, administrative items, which is the minutes from May 6, 2015. Do we have any, any changes or any recommendations or motions?
I move that we approve the meeting, meeting minutes from May 6, 2015.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Bloomfield, a second from Commissioner, or Vice Chair Sipple. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes seven, zero.
I'll be abstaining since I wasn't at last meeting.
Okay, so passes six, zero.
Six, zero, one, yes.
Six, zero, one. That brings us communications from the chairman and members of the commission for current events. Anybody have any current events? Okay, I guess we'll skip it this month. A report from Council liaison.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you to the commissioners for great discussion, not an easy case. I wanted to share with you that the, between a partnership with Maricopa County and the Town of Gilbert, we were able to acquire a parcel of land of 211 acres down near, south of Queen Creek Road and west of Higley Road that will be used for a future park for our residents in the south area of Gilbert. And it was quite a feat to be pulled off, and it was the, it's the Maricopa Floodway, and I think it's a, a great opportunity for us to build a park for the residents down there because we've been hearing them for, from them for a while, that they would like something to use down there like we have here at Freestone Park up here in the north area of Gilbert. So that was a big, that was a big item. And also, I'm going to share some handouts with you. One is about the Neighbor to Neighbor Program. I don't know if you've heard about it, but it's a way to donate back through your Town of Gilbert bill, and it's a great way just to add one, two, three, $10 to your bill every month, and it goes into Neighbor to Neighbor pot that can be used for our nonprofit organizations here in Gilbert without taking out of our general fund. And also, a new program in Gilbert which is called Discover Gilbert. It's a great map of the area. It's going to show a lot of our new restaurants and locations for you to partake should you choose. I don't know if anybody's been down to the Heritage District, but last night I was leaving a meeting at the Chamber, and it was about 7:30 Tuesday night, and there was an hour and 15-minute wait at Oregano's. There was a 45-minute wait at Zinburger, so that gives you some idea of how popular the restaurants are down Tuesday night, 7:30. So very popular. Near and dear to my heart is the Gilbert Leadership Program. I'm going to pass you out a postcard for that if anybody's interested in looking into that. And then I have some fun decals that Gilbert is now distributing about our new program that's called Think Gilbert. It's not just Shop Gilbert anymore. It's Think Shop Gilbert, Think Dine Gilbert, Think Explore Gilbert, because there's a lot more to Gilbert than just shopping. So I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Brings us to a report from Planning Service Manager.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for all your work. I only have an opportunity to say that 12 times a year, and I really mean it. It's a lot of work. I appreciate all the input you give, the service you give to our communities, both the business community and the resident community. I think you represent Gilbert very well. I'm going to tag on to Councilmember Peterson's comments this evening and draw your attention and share it with your neighbors, that Gilbert has a wonderful social media, digital newsroom. And Councilmember Peterson just mentioned the Chandler Basin, so there's a great YouTube out on it, and if you could share it with your neighbors, and it even shows a great concept of the types of recreational amenities we'll have in that basin. So on our homepage, you can certainly check the digital newsroom, and from there, there's plenty of links to how to stay connected, mobile apps, and just so many great news clips that will really help you see how much Gilbert has grown and how up to date we are on so many wonderful services that we offer in here in Gilbert.
And, and we didn't plan this, but what Linda just told you, I just sent an email to the seven of you with a link to that video, so we didn't even plan that.
Well, thanks for the link, for the real-time efforts that we've got here. Okay, well, it's been a fun night, but we'll adjourn the meeting. Motion adjourned.